Counsel.
John Ketcher.
Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and pray for guidance and direction to do the city business for the benefit of the people. We also lift up our men and women who are serving their country right now, whether they be stateside or overseas in harm's way. We just pray for a hedge protection around them. And for those who made the ultimate sacrifice, we lift up their families and we pray for peace and comfort that only your Son Jesus Christ can provide. Father God, be with our nation tomorrow. We pray for peace. In His name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Lady, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great love for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Troya Shropshire.
Here.
Dennis Nance.
Here.
Here.
Randy Chitwood.
Here.
Brianna Breakfield.
Jimmy Trammell.
Here.
Yolanda Thompson.
Here.
Thank you very much. Item two petitions for the audience. I'm not aware of any. Item three, department head reports. Building inspector. Recognize Mr. Kenny Young.
Just want to let you know for 2020, we have a total of 460 grand permits and the dollar figure for those permits were $81,170 and there was a total of 609 inspections done during the year. Do you all have any questions remaining or anything?
Can we borrow your cane?
I'm sorry.
Can we borrow your cane?
I heard that you were wanting that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much Kenny. Next in line, emergency management. Recognize Mr. Johnny Jansen. Go ahead and move the microphone towards you there, sir.
Better?
Yeah.
Well, the last couple of weeks, we've pretty much been working on vaccines, helping the health department get all that situated. We've done a lot of, most of the first responders, we've got a couple of stragglers, done a lot of the critical infrastructure personnel. And hopefully this next Wednesday, we'll start our first general population pod site out at the fairgrounds. So that's the plan at this point anyway. And I've got a young lady that is over, her name's Ashley. She is over the vaccines for our region. And if you guys have any questions, she's available by phone. She'd be glad for us to call her and you guys can ask any questions you have concerning the vaccine and where we're at with it if you want.
What's counsel's pleasure?
Might be a good idea to get the information out.
Very good. What is that number?
Well, hang on. 918-373-2623. Is there?
John, would you like to dial that in?
You bet.
Just put it on, put it on speaker and put that microphone right up to it. Put your microphone right up to it.
This is Ashley.
Hello, Ashley. This is Mayor Larry Lees. And you are live in a city council meeting right now. And this is, this is by the recommendation of Mr. Johnny Jansen. Our counsel is here and some of them may have question for you. And if you do, counsel, I'd encourage you to speak closely to the microphone.
Is there, is there a plan to get the vaccines into nursing homes?
Yes, the state has identified a pharmacy partner plan with Walgreens and CBS that has been activated. Most nursing homes in Mays County have a partner of Walgreens or CBS. The ones that did not were already identified to the Mays County Health Department and taken care of by the Health Department.
How are you handling people that do not have access to Facebook in the community, the elderly community, the community that's underserved in order to get their vaccinations?
There are slots reserved each day for those who do not have access to online signup. And those folks can call the Health Department and get signed up. I know that for this week, all of our signups are completely full. But when we open up our signups for next week, if you do not have access to Facebook, but you heard that there are signups open through news, social media, your friends, we're encouraging people to call the Health Department to get one of those reserved spots for people who do not have access.
I do know people that have tried to call at eight o'clock several times and they try for over an hour and can't get through. There's something wrong with the systems. They just can't get through for an over an hour and they finally give up. Then they'll call, then they'll call, I know people have called Lawton, Oklahoma that's gotten through and they're going to Lawton, Oklahoma to get shots. Because you're going to Noawhat and everything else because it's easier to get through at those other areas than it is here in Mays County. I know that firsthand. And I think that needs to be addressed.
So right now, the state does not have anything to address that. They are working on a 211 partnership to have anybody who is needing to call 211 and get through to someone immediately versus overloading the phones at the Health Department. Because the Health Department is fielding phone calls for testing, vaccine, and regular Health Department services at this time. And so yes, the phones are busy and it is hard to get through. And we are working on that, but I do not have an exact solution for you right this second.
Okay. So where's this site on Facebook? You just do a search? Mays County Health Department? Is that what you put in?
It's not an easy access. It's not easy access. It's, it's very difficult and cumbersome to use. And I've had a lot of people call and complain. A lot of people in my church have called and complained. And so a lot of people in this community are very upset with the, with the direction we're going with this thing and everything else. And so a lot of people, it is easier to get in. And Rogers County, Rogers, Noawhat County, there is, it is easier to do that. And I've had a lot of people do that. Guys got in yesterday at Rogers County. They'll say there's no slots available in Mays County. And then you call back and 30 minutes later, there are slots available. How that's happening, I don't know, but it's happening.
Well, I, I do know, was it last Tuesday that our county, I know some of my employee or my coworkers had appointments and they went and got in line. But there was people that did not have an appointment and they all received a shot. So they're, they're not turning anybody away. So I mean, I think that was.
So there was a, and I think if I'm hearing your question correctly, there were people without an appointment who got a vaccine yesterday. There was a misunderstanding at the Mays County Health Department and they thought that all of their vaccine on hand needed to be used. That misunderstanding has been corrected. They are back to if you do not have an appointment, you do not get a vaccine. And that was just a, a miscommunication internally that had nothing to do with who did get a shot and, and who we were calling, things like that. And that was rectified immediately.
Is there an additional email address that you can get on to, to get an appointment?
So right now, there are no appointments available. So there is no website email address link to go to. Everything is full and booked. When the scheduler comes out tomorrow afternoon to sign up for next week's appointment, we will make sure that the links are wisely published. The appointments are limited due to the amount of vaccine. And so when they're gone, unfortunately, they are gone.
I was given an email address. I don't know if this was, was a good one or bad, but it was vsafe@cdc.gov. Is that a good email address?
For who?
I, I called the Health Department this morning and they said if you want to get an appointment, this is the, this was the email address that you would go to, or the address you would go to, excuse me.
If you're, if you're looking for an appointment at the local Health Department, then, then no, none of the addresses end in CDC. And I'm not sure what you were given or why you were given that address. The Health Department will either publish a link or you'll have to call. But there is no signup email address at this time.
Okay. So to get that link, how would that be accessible?
One of our emergency managers is working with your hall emergency manager, Emily Snow. And I believe she put that link out to the emergency managers last week. And then through the Health Department's Facebook page, we understand that for the 65 and over population, that was not easy. And so we are looking at other avenues of publishing that. I don't have an exact answer at this time. But those links will probably come out tomorrow afternoon or Thursday morning at the latest.
So Johnny, if we can get that from, from emergency management, we can post that on our city website, on our city Facebook page. We can, we can broadcast that pretty wide.
And why, and why don't we use PSAs? You know what I'm saying? Why don't you, we use PSAs? We have a local newspaper. We have a lot of access to emergency things like the call center that we can use. PSA seems to me, here we are claiming a pandemic, but we're not doing it, they're using every tool we can to get the information out to the public.
I'm sorry, who is it that you're saying?
I'm just saying, why aren't we using PSAs, public service announcements, like using the paper, using the, our emergency call center, putting it on our website, giving people the information out there to know what's going on? Because people are in the dark, you know? You go to the donut shop in the morning, you talk to the old man, or you go to the, you go to Carl Junior's. People are in the dark and are upset because they don't understand what's going on, the older people. We need to do a better job. You need to do a better job.
That has been brought to our attention repeatedly. And so we are working through those channels. I don't know if those will all be utilized come Wednesday afternoon or Thursday morning. But that is on our radar that obviously not everybody has a Facebook page. And I believe that for the events that were scheduled this week, because the state said go and do, we went and did as quickly as possible. And that did leave a lot of people in the dark. But we were also just trying to follow our directives. So we understand that has to change and that will be changing.
Ashley, are we still planning on the, the pod site for next Wednesday?
Have we decided on a pod site? Is that your question?
No, I said, are we still planning on the pod site for Mays County for next Wednesday?
I have a planning meeting tomorrow morning. We are, and I, and I can't tell you yes or no at this point because I, I have to go to that meeting in the morning and, and talk to everybody who's involved in that plan. If, if Emily has identified Mays as Wednesday's pod day, then yes, that will continue. I don't have the schedule in front of me right this second to tell you yes or no, if that's even a tentative plan. I'm sorry. I did not, I don't have that available right now.
Okay.
So that perhaps would be available on the 13th, but we're not sure yet. But if it becomes available, then we can try to communicate the best we can.
Yes. And, and like I said, we, we will know more tomorrow morning and we will publicize everything we can Wednesday afternoon and Thursday morning. If you would like to give me your email or, or a phone number, I can contact you as soon as I know something to let you know as well.
Yeah, I can get ahold of you tomorrow. That'd be fine.
Okay.
Are there any questions from counsel?
I, I mean, I follow the Health Department page. So I'll do my best to post it and share and as much as I can. I mean, I do see their stuff every day. So I just went and found the, where they posted to sign up. Of course, it's all filled up. But we can definitely do our best to try to share that as much as possible.
And I'm not sure what number Jimmy was talking about exactly. I contacted the Health Department today about three o'clock to gain this information regarding the COVID, COVID vaccination. And I had zero problem getting through.
Yesterday at eight o'clock, I tried from eight to 11. I just got a text message. I want to say from an individual, two hour wait outside the Health Department Center for a shot. I don't know if that's true or not. That's what, that's what this person told me. He just got a text message.
Yep.
He said, ask that question. How come the wait is two hours?
I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm not understanding. I'm not, it's not clear what the.
I just got a text message from an individual that said he had to wait two hours outside for a shot at the Health Department. He had a two hour wait. Now, whether he did or not, I don't know. But that's what he just said. He just texted me.
We had some go yesterday and waited two and a half hours.
So yesterday, there were appointments scheduled. Like I said, there was an internal miscommunication. There were additional appointments scheduled. And then there was an additional miscommunication on top of that. And so yes, yesterday, there were extremely long wait times. But we have been telling everybody that if you do not come early, which I know is very counterintuitive to a lot of people, and you show up exactly at your time, your wait time in line will be much shorter. We are, we are planning those shot times, not the early arrival times.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Ashley, thank you very much for participating with us tonight. We look forward to talking to you again.
Okay. Let me know what you know need. Thank you.
Uh huh. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
So the reason I wanted to do that was so that you guys could hear some of the troubles that we're having. You know, Mr. Trammell's pretty much hitting it right on the nose. We've had issues from the beginning. They're in a bad spot. I mean, they're, they've got a few thousand vaccines and they've got 40,000 people that live here. And everybody that wants it, wants it right now. So they're in a difficult spot. They've got a, they've got a tough road to hoe. But, but they've been putting a plan together and following it. It's not been, not been going very well so far. So I, I'd wanted to call her tonight so that y'all could kind of hear some of the issues that we're having. And there is some issues.
So, so there's the initial shot, but if there's a booster shot later?
There, there will be. You have to have, depending on whether you get the Moderna or you get the Pfizer, the Pfizer is three weeks, the Moderna is 25 days later. 25, 20, yeah. So you will have to have two shots. And, you know, and eventually I'm hoping they get a better handle on it and, and things get going a little smoother. I think once they get these, start doing these pod sites, they'll start getting a lot more of the public vaccinated. But something that was told to me that was going to happen no matter what on the 13th is now they're trying to back out on. So that's, that's the reason I wanted you guys to hear that. So.
Thank you, Johnny.
So putting out a public service announcement is prob, is probably the quickest way, the quickest way to do that.
And, I mean, and the, they have their own public information officers for the Health Department and this is their deal. So, you know, I'm just trying to help them, trying to be the middleman between, you know, trying to help them get things coordinated and keep the public happy as well. But, but, you know, we're getting calls, 20, 30 calls a day over the existing same issue.
So will our own health physicians, will it ever go to our health physicians to be able to go there to get a shot?
Eventually. You say your doctor, is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So eventually, when supply catches up with demand and, and vaccines are readily available, you will be, eventually be able to go to your doctor to get it done. That's going to be.
They're talking like February.
I'm hoping. I would, I would probably see it more like, you know, and some of them may have it by then. But, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if it's March or April before, before that starts happening. So, but, I mean, like I said, I'm not one down play, they've got a tough, they've got a tough situation. Like I said, they got a couple thousand shots and they got 40,000 people that want it. So it just doesn't commute. They've got four lines at the Health Department to answer. And they've got thousands of people calling them every day. Some people call them for hours, you know, over and over and over and over again. So, you know, it, phone rings is busy all the time.
And they probably only have one person answering the phone.
Yeah. Well, they got four lines. So they, they can't have very many.
Yeah. Sure.
Getting the word out. I mean, couldn't we, when we know, when we know.
Sorry. If there's going to be some more vaccines coming in, that we, we draw something up, post it down there at the senior nutrition center, Surtoma, disperse it to the churches so that they can make the announcements through their congregation Sunday morning, that type of deal? Well, I don't think that, I mean, we're getting enough people that are calling or getting on Facebook. You know, they're fine in a way. The problem isn't that at this point. The problem is not having enough vaccines. That's the problem. So, you know, like this last week, when we filled up, our whole week, it done it in like less than an hour. You know, that's, so, but we, that's all the shots we had and haven't more. So.
What really frustrates me is you call and you get on and there's no vaccines available then at three, at nine o'clock in the morning. Then you call back at three o'clock available and then you get a vaccine.
Yep.
That's happening. So that's why people are hitting it, hitting it redial, 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 redial. And just, and I know several people, that's all they do all day long is set at a location and hit redial to get people vaccinated. Period. That's all they do. They're getting paid to do that all day.
So I do have the answer to that right now. It's the situation with that is if somebody shows up and doesn't show up at nine o'clock appointment, once that's thawed out, it's no longer usable, viable by the end of the, at the end of the day. So those folks who call in later get that shot at that appointment missed at nine AM. And that becomes available. And so they try to reschedule and that's how they come available in the day. So.
And that's what happened yesterday.
That's good to know.
And that's what happened.
Well, that's something like that needs to be out there, public, public information.
And they, they probably.
Yeah.
That's probably when they're taking individuals that were not scheduled, but you can't waste that vaccine. You give it to somebody that's standing in line.
That's what happened yesterday. That's what the two hour wait was about. They had vaccines opened up. Not, nobody was in line. So they started calling down the list. A bunch of people started showing up. And then there was too many to show. So then they had to sit and wait.
Oh, they showed up at eight in the morning and waited two and a half hours.
Yeah.
Thanks, Johnny.
So anyway, I mean, it'll eventually get better. The more vaccine we get, the more people get checked off the list. You know, it'll get better.
Thank you very much, sir. Fire Department. Recognize Chief BK Young.
Hand it out last year's, in the year runs. So if y'all have any questions on that. We saw a little drop in medicals, but we switched everything to all emergency or not emergency, but Echo and Delta level calls. So we saw a little drop in those.
Yeah, that's way down.
Grass fires, we kind of lucked out on those. Didn't get crazy like we usually do. So not like that. Structure fires were up. Y'all have any questions on that?
No.
Or explosions, huh?
Thanks for the report.
Yeah, we get a bunch of those out there at the industrial park. And, and actually, we used to log them a little different. But some of their insurances out there like to see it because there won't be as much damage, fire damage. But they'll have some ruptures and stuff like that to where it helps them on their insurance if, if we show it as to, because when we get there, usually everything's actually taken care of on, on that side of things. If they've had a substantial rupture or something like that.
Appreciate you coming in. Be in color coat, your shoes match your shirt. You know, that looks pretty good.
Well, no, I thought, what would, what would Jimmy like?
Lighten this thing up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for reporting, BK. Appreciate it. Golf. Recognize our superintendent, Dennis Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. First of all, I'd like to send thanks from myself and my staff for the gift cards. That was awful generous of you folks and we appreciated that. Weather's been awful good for December. It's been extraordinary. You know, we've had very good weather on our weekends and very good weather on the holiday weekend. So golf business was just great. I had to go all the way back to 2005 where we had more paid golfers than we did this year. So it's been 15 years since we've had a December like this. So it's been very good. I don't know if y'all got the little report that I made. Our little sales, membership sales went really good. We've actually got two completely new members. We converted seven silver members to our regular memberships. And so that raised $9,100. And then we had quite a few members just go ahead and pay early, which raised another $10,000. So I think our December revenue was like $37,000. And, you know, last year, a year ago, it's $7,000. So very good job. We were excited. We was busy almost the whole month of December. So it's kind of unusual to be that busy, but we sure enjoyed it. So on the maintenance side, we're starting to tear some equipment down so we can rebuild some of our equipment and get it all ready for next year. We're doing some drainage projects and doing some tree projects. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dennis. Library. Recognize our library. And Mr. Kerry Rarrett.
I don't have much to report. I took some time off to be with my kids over there winter break. So I haven't been in the office much. But I did look at our statistics from 2019 compared with 2020. And it's about what we expected and what's, what's been showing every month. We're about at half of what we did the previous year. So we look at the number of physical items that have checked out. We're down about just, just under half. And our door count is about the same. Which makes sense. We were closed for two months and we have a pandemic. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know, those are, that's what our numbers are looking at right now. Hopefully now that we have a vaccine, everything will start creeping back up and we'll get to do in-person programming and be in the community's living room again. That'll be fun. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do. What about the floor?
What about the floor?
But the last report you had, that we had issues with the floor. And is there any update on what you can give us on, on the subsoil? Is it all in the architect's hands or anything?
So.
Safety issue?
We had a company come out and do a core sample. And that's really all that's happened so far. The repair for the floor is going to likely have to be part of the package that we're doing with the Bond project. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's safe, it's secure, and we're just waiting.
Okay. They did a first survey, they did a second survey, and that's, that is in the hands of Graber and CMS Wilbrook.
That's good. Okay. You know, it's good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kerry. Parks and Cemetery, no report tonight. Police Department. Recognize Chief Nichols.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor, unless y'all have any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Very much, Chief. Recreation Center. Recognize Ms. Long.
We are super busy right now. So as to be expected. We had 59 new members in December, which for the month of December is really a good number. So we're averaging between 55 and 65 every month for the last five months. So we're pleased with that. I'm, if I were to guess, the last two days, we've had about that many in new or people who have reactivated their memberships. So it's been packed. We're taking extra precaution to make sure we're abiding by the COVID restrictions. We're moving some of our popular classes into the gym because we're limited to 15 people in group fitness rooms. So we've got Jesse spraying with the COVID machine a little more. And so we're doing what we can to manage it. But so far, so good. And the patrons are doing a good job to keep things clean. So other than that, we started software training today on the new software. So we should go live February 1 with that, fingers crossed. Jerome and I may not make it through January, but it's, it's a lot. But it's going to be good. It's all going to be worth it. So we're excited about that. But other than that, I think we have all our little repairs done for now. We're waiting on the planning design group to kind of move forward with the, everything out back. But we're good. We're good. Busy.
Jessica, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Street Department. No report. Very good. We'll move to item four, mayor's report. Cares reimbursement account report. And I do have a report for you tonight. And I need to find out where it is in my stack here. Here it is. The total that we were awarded from, from the state was $722,935.44. We did put in reserves, $202,422. To date, we have spent, starting from March, we have spent $153,915.4 Excuse me. That is since, since we first started tracking and since the month of March. The useful funds remaining, I'm, I'm talking about useful funds. Those are funds that are not in reserves, $366,500. And then with the remaining reserves, there would be $569,000 remaining in the Cares Act reimbursement fund. We are, we are spending for all kinds of different equipment. we are spending, uh, for all kinds of different equipment, uh, anything as, uh, as small as a box of masks to, uh, as large as, uh, uh, the, uh, the equipment that the useful utility board is using now to, uh, take in their, their fees. So, uh, uh, we're also expending, uh, monies for payroll, uh, from that, uh, uh, from that bucket of money. And, uh, so that is the report. Uh, I'll be giving a, uh, report monthly, uh, now going forward, uh, because our system is able to then track, uh, uh, appropriately, uh, the funds that we're spending from all those, uh, different items. Uh, what I do is, is I get a report, uh, it's from each department and we're keeping spreadsheets, uh, from each department uh, about, uh, uh, going forward, about those monies that are being spent. Are there any questions that council would have of me about that?
Yeah, I've got a question. Now, this, this reflects on our, we, this is not a separate count, line item that we have this line item in. This is in our general fund. So our fund balance, the fund balance would, would, we, would reflect you of these, of this numbers, right?
Well, this is a line item.
I understand that, but this is a, this is a line, but is this part of, if you look at this CARES Act funding, is this part of our overall fund balance? Or is this set up just like you do real property acquisition or another special account? Is this part of our fund bal, overall fund balance for the year?
It, it will be, it will, it does show as a fund balance in the, uh, in the revenue, in the revenue section.
Yeah.
It does show as a fund balance. What we will be doing, uh, this is, this is more budget, budget personnel, uh, proper information, but what we will be doing is going back and capturing, uh, funds that we have spent out of budget line item, uh, budget line items and we will be, uh, uh, awarding funds back into those line items. Uh, so that the reflection is out of the CARES Act funding rather than out of the budget funding. Does that make sense?
All right. So we have a line item then for a revenue line item for itself, even just for CARES Act funding. It's a revenue line item.
That's correct.
That's right. Okay. And that money, then we have a, then you have a debit or a, your debit and credit.
And we have a corresponding expense line.
Line item.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But then, then that, when that expense, that line item, then it reflects on our fund balance at the end of the month. We see what our fund balance is at the end of the month, correct? On, on the general fund.
Uh, yes, it does.
Right. That's, right.
Are there any other questions? Very good. Thank you very much. Item B, discussion possible action regarding removing from the table, item six M from the December fifteen, two thousand and twenty city council agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
Who?
Uh, Shropshire. Second. Smith. Discussion. Call for vote.
Hatcher.
Yes.
Shropshire.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Chipwood.
Yes.
Breakfield.
Yes.
Trammell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item C, discussion possible action regarding authorizing mayor to sign franchise agreement with Cox Comm LLC. Motion?
Make that motion.
Motion Smith, who seconded. Second Breakfield. Discussion.
You know, we going to look at this, the questions, first thing, some of the questions we've got here that's Kim is so eloquently.
Would invite, uh, Mr. Richie to, uh.
And I appreciate the, the, uh, the way he did it because it is in very nice format, be understood. I appreciate it. I'd like to just go over it and just see what, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. First, you know, the terms of agreement I asked for the, I asked for some things about, you want to do it or you just want, can you do that? Or do you want to do it? Or Larry wants to do it?
I'm here to serve. Somebody tell me what to do.
Mr. Richie, if you'll come to the microphone and, and, uh.
It's not that long. It's about, it's only three pages.
If you could enumerate the question and then the answer to the question.
Okay. When you look, I'm just looking at your notes.
Let me sort my stuff out here.
And if we need to make the changes accordingly, some of your notes or not.
By the way, we do have, uh, Ms. Robbie Squires here from, uh, Cox Comm tonight. She came all the way from Oklahoma City today to be with us. And if we have any questions for her, then she's here to answer those. Uh, could, could you introduce?
I have to say, the, the guy you probably all really want to talk to is your hometown hero, Rob Collins.
Not say hero. No, he's not a hero. He's just.
He took me to dinner beforehand, so you better. Um, I have a full belly, so I'm gonna get him. I don't want to be angry at all. But Rob oversees the construction department, specifically oversees the operations, um, for Cox Communications here in Pryor and then Mid-American Industrial Park and lives here. Uh, kids go to school here. Um, so he sleeps, breathes, uh, this community and so this has been a passion project for him and obviously very important, uh, local component to it.
Welcome, Rob. A pleasure here. We also have Mr. John Shaw Fitzel with Mid-American Industrial Park. He is here as well. And, uh, John, you're always welcome, uh, with us. Mr. Richie.
Yes, sir. I'll simply follow the email that I sent out after I received your questions and I really, really appreciate you guys providing questions to me in advance so that I've got time to look into them and get answers.
And I appreciate you doing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, the little introduction to this is that this is provided to you in order for you. In the telecommunications and cable industry, the federal government has preempted state law and it's really federal law that we follow. Very little state law. Title forty-seven, USC, section five forty-one provides in part that a franchising authority may not grant an exclusive franchise and may not unreasonably refuse to award an additional competitive franchise. Supposed to be a level field for everybody. So the first question that I received, um, was regarding the term of the agreement. The term of the agreement that is currently in it is ten-year term. Question was, are we wedded to that or could it be something like a seven-year term? My response, uh, after looking into it was that the industry maximum terms of agreements range from ten to fifteen years in length. There was a report to the House of Representatives, uh, that made those findings. The suggested term of ten years is certainly reasonable within industry standards and the old agreement that we had that is still in existence with VIVE had a fifteen-year term. So a ten-year term request is, is completely within, uh, reason.
Thank you.
The next item was a request for language to be changed, requiring the parties to enter into negotiations for renewal one year from the date of council approval. There is a window during which the provider is to notify the city of their renewal or intent not to renew. And that period of time under federal law is thirty to thirty-six months prior to expiration. Can discussions be had prior to that? Sure they can. But, uh, the, the federal law provides that window. So entering into negotiations one year after approval, in my opinion, is premature under federal law and premature in, in practice. Because if it was a ten-year agreement, you're starting to talk about renewal nine years prior to the expiration of the agreement. The next item was paragraph three point five point A, which is on page three of the agreement. And the, the suggestion was that we change a shall to a may in the language. And let me find that. A five. Okay, so A five reads, "In the event that any other video service provider, including but not limited to a cable operator or open video service provider, enters into any agreement or makes any arrangement with the city during the term of this agreement whereby it is required or allowed to pay a fee to the city that is similar to the franchise fee described herein, the city shall," okay, so there's the shall, "allow Cox to substitute the definition of gross revenue set forth in that agreement or arrangement for the definition of gross revenue set forth in this agreement immediately upon request of Cox." So in plain language, if we entered into this agreement with Cox and then we had another person come into the market wanting a franchise agreement and we granted them a franchise agreement and the gross revenue definition in that agreement was more advantageous, more profitable than the gross revenue, uh, definition in this agreement, then Cox could request and we would be required to match, allow change in it so that Cox's gross revenue definition matched this more advantageous one. That's actually law. Uh, the law requires that if that occurs, because you're trying to keep this level playing field for all of the people that are engaged in that market. So the law requires that. Is this only for new, uh, franchises? It, it is. That's, that, you, I, I ask you a question about grandfathering. Man, people that are already have an agreement with the city, will we have to change those? That was what I was trying to get to. As grandfathering the agreements we already have, does that change? That law has been in effect for, I'm gonna say it's gonna apply because that law's been in effect for a long time. Let me find it here and see if it's got a date on it. I was just wondering if we had an agreement already with the business in town and it wasn't the same as what Cox's agreement was, will we have to go back and change that even though they have an agreement with us at this time? Uh, that came into existence back in nineteen eighty-four with the, uh, passage of the ca, the Federal, um, Cable Act, or not, yeah, Federal Cable Act. So, I mean, I, I, it's really a moot issue. Uh, so yeah, you gotta match the terms if they're requested. So there's no advantage to changing the language over, uh, to may from shall because it's the law, so you shall. The next item was the very next paragraph, which gave the city the.
That'd be paragraph, paragraph six on page three.
Yeah, page three. Okay, paragraph six on page three. "That provision is simply the flip-flop. In the event that any other municipality enters into any, any agreement or makes any arrangement with Cox during the term of this agreement whereby Cox is required or allowed to pay a fee to the city that is similar to the franchise fee described herein, Cox shall allow the city to substitute the definition of gross revenue set forth in that agreement or arrangement for the definition of gross revenue set forth in this agreement upon the request of the city and, uh, Cox shall be afforded ninety days to implement the change." So if another city entered into an agreement that was more advantageous to the city, then we could provide notice and receive the benefit of, of that modification.
Can we go back?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to, you know, the shall and the may, one of the items that you said on that, on that paragraph, believe that language could be inserted allowing ninety days to affect the change?
Yeah, I spoke with, uh, asking, okay, so back on the last one, the question, I'm sorry, I missed that. The question was, so if it stays like this, can we insert language that would allow us ninety days to accommodate that change? And I, the way the law, the law is written, uh, it, it, it just says that when it happens, it'll be done. I think that contractually you could vary from that if the provider was willing to put in a, a ninety-day time lag for that.
The reason, the reason I asked for that, and I put that in there is because ninety days, we may have to do some internal paperwork. We may have to do some things here in the office, get some things passed through that needs to be, both parties may need to have ninety days to get something done because it may not be automatic. It's like, it's like a tax, it's like when we change our sales tax. You know, we say a sales tax. You know, we have to do that. It takes a while to get that sales tax and you have to do it so many, much ti, period of time. So that's why I put that in there is that so the state have time to change it or that we'd have time to review it, change it and work with Eva's office and both parties could get that ninety days period of time. So that's, and that's the only reason I wanted, had that put in there. Makes me no difference. I'm just trying to assist us in any way we can.
Yeah, and I, we've got some reps here we can talk to if we need to, but, uh, I asked that question and they said, you know, it's very rare that they would be able to get their paperwork shifted over
Yeah.
in less than ninety days even making that change. But certainly I do think that's a contractual provision that, that would be legal if everybody was in agreement with it.
Well, I would agree with that. And that was a question I was gonna have because, like you said, you went to the next section. It says allow them ninety days to do that. So would it not be fair on the flip side, instead of implementing it for you, for them right away, give the other party time too? And I understand the other party's already set, but for us to get our affairs in order, so to say.
So if that, if that were offered, okay, fine. I understand that that term, that is not in the VIVE.
I know that. Yeah.
So that would be a more advantageous term. And also, in my opinion, that could not be used as a basis to refuse the agreement. You know, it's just like, okay, if everybody's okay with that, we can put it in there.
I'd like to see it put in there, but that's, that, to me, it's, it's between the parties, the Cox and the city. You know, I don't think it's something we can demand, but I think both parties ought to look at it and try to do it.
We, we operate in this, like, all the time. I think the way the state statute is written is within a reasonable amount of time. So it's left for, for the city to say this is a reasonable amount of time and we, we operate in a, whatever, a reasonable amount of time. Also, when you're talking about the change in gross revenue, um, there's not any paperwork on our side because all payments come from us. You don't invoice us. We proactively pay. Um, so there wouldn't be any paperwork short of amending this document, which you wouldn't need to do necessarily. So as far as the paperwork, we, we calculate that off of our customer's bills every month and we proactively send it. So I don't know that there would be any paperwork or any back office work to, on the city's side, but we certainly, um, operate in this state everywhere where we do sixty-four communities across the state.
Sure, it's your call. But, you know, I just threw that out there and said, I'd like to see some kind of language. The state statute says that, reasonable time or there's something in there, but like per state statute, but put in there. So that's my suggestion, so.
Okay. The next item was under three point seven point D, the second paragraph of that. That's on page four. That paragraph says, "In addition to the termination rights set forth above, Cox shall have the right to terminate this agreement and all obligations hereunder upon ninety days' notice to the city if I, state or federal law changes in a manner that would allow Cox to opt into franchise requirements that are in Cox's sole judgment more beneficial than those contained herein, or double I, another provider of video services is permitted through a city authorization or otherwise to use the public rights of way to provide video services on terms that are in Cox's sole judgment more beneficial than those contained herein." And the request was, can sole judgment, uh, be stricken? Can, can sole judgment be taken out? Again, if agreeable to the parties, uh, that language could be stricken. If it was a, agreeable to both sides, uh, I mean, that's the law. And they're just saying that in our judgment, if those terms are better than the ones that we've got now, we get to change to those. I can't see how that request could ever be made unless the terms were better.
Yeah.
In which case the law says that they can do that.
I don't think it needs to be done then. I think the law's the law.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't see an advantage.
I don't see, I don't see advantage there at all.
Um, item three point seven point E on page four. That says. That says Cox shall determine in its sole discretion where in the city its facilities shall be constructed, operated, maintained, repaired, and upgraded to provide, and where in the city to provide its cable services. The concern over that was that that makes it sound like they can put these things anywhere they want, they can, they can put a facility anywhere they want. But what you have to do is recognize that also, under the agreement, they're subject to all of the permitting and permission requirements of the city on use of only those easements which have been designated for this type of an allowable use. Any questions on that?
So, that, the, let me see, trying to remember about why I put that in.
Well, I think your concern was that we don't have any control over where they put lines.
That's right, that, that's what that was, and we, and, and so, and just like we don't have any control, so if somebody else wants to put, so if the, if another party wants to put lines somewhere else, we can do that, okay? And it has to be in easements and places, and so that's where that brought, and so then, did, did Jared or did you, just for utility board come up with some kind of language reflected of that?
I, I received input from the MUB and it was literally, everything's okay.
That was my question too, has, has MUB been introduced into the...
We had an email from MUB.
Yeah, we've got one here.
We've ordered.
You should've got a copy, you get a copy of MUB here.
Rob can tell you, we have a...
We have a certificate of occupancy in the city prior already to provide services throughout town. This, along with the permitting agreements with MUB, we've permitted close to two hundred and twenty poles in the city prior already, fiber, we have almost eleven and a half miles of fiber up through town. So, yeah, this, this has been going on for four years, so this is a different service.
We're, we're in a unique situation with the city here, because MUB's part of the city, but then again, it doesn't work under the same rules, regulations, we're, we're kinda in an unusual situation, that's why we were more concerned.
But we did, we did establish a certificate of occupancy with the city prior and separate from MUB, so we have both.
Okay.
I think that the key difference here is we are already providing broadband to specific business customers that we have relationships with and broadband out at Mid-America, we've already laid infrastructure at the district. This just allows us to offer, federal law requires that if we're gonna provide video service, we have to get a franchise, so we'll be running that service, it'll be already existing infrastructure, and any infrastructure we build for broadband, so it's not changing that, we continue to do that, this just allows the city to charge a franchise fee on the video component of our business. So, that's really the only change, what's currently happening.
Yes, it goes both ways, if somebody, if they want, if, if, if somebody comes in and wants to add that service out there at the district, and they want, they find customers out there, they'll, they'll have the same opportunity to do the same thing, franchise fee and everything, so, yeah. Thank you, Ken.
Covered on that?
Yep.
Okay. The next one was paragraph five on page five. No, no, it wasn't. The next one was, can the franchise area granted be defined by the parties? So, could the franchise be limited within an area in the city? And the answer to that question is yes, but only if that's what Cox wanted. If the franchisee is saying, we only want a franchise in this particular area, well then certainly that's by agreement, contract, okay? But the city, because of the fairness principles of the act, that everybody has to be treated the same, we couldn't tell one person that they can operate in this area and another cable operator that they can only operate in this area, so.
That would be a monopoly, basically.
Well, it'd be unfair, yeah, under the act. So, paragraph five, page five now. Paragraph five, page five talks about modification of the agreement, and it says, "This agreement may be modify, may be amended or modified only by a written instrument executed by both parties." The question was, can we specify that this has to have council approval? My response to that is that all contracts have to have council approval. The mayor signs the contract, but the council has to approve the contract in order for the mayor to sign it, therefore, as a matter of practice, it's gotta have council approval.
Just wanna make sure that they're aware of that also, so.
Yes, sir. Okay, then, section seventy-nine of the charter says that no franchise can be renewed before five years prior to its expiration, and the request was that perhaps we wanted to put that into the agreement. The federal time period of that thirty to thirty-six months really defines the time period that we need to operate under. Charter section seventy-five says, do we need an, the, the question was, do we need an ordinance to enter into the franchise agreement? The answer is no. Franchises can be entered into either by ordinance or by contract or agreement, either way, so the agreement is, is fine. I think in, way back in time, I think that the more common practice was ordinances, but we see more and more just agreements, so we do not need one. The next one was charter section seventy-eight says that a franchise cannot be transferred or assigned. Can this be put in the agreement? This is one of those provisions that I think is illegal. We have a federal act that defines how these companies can be sold to each other, the notices that have to be given, the disclosure.
I think with that law that you, that act that you, that you get and I read, yeah, I agree, you know, I read it, so.
So, I, I think this is one of those instances where nineteen fifty-five, nineteen fifty-five charter, I believe, is probably a little outdated. Charter section eighty-two indicates that matters can be inserted in the franchise agreement that are not specifically stated in the charter provisions. Request was made that that provision itself be inserted into the agreement. My response is, I really don't believe that it's necessary to, to put our charter provision in the agreement, I mean, the agreement is what the agreement is. And, and like I say, it's pretty much been superseded by federal law. The next question really had to do with whether or not MUB had had the opportunity to review it.
I think we've gone through everything.
MUB's looked at everything and they are okay with it. And there is no conflict between that seven point B and two C.
Okay.
The final thing, I don't call, I didn't state it in here, because it wasn't a question that was raised, but Ben, Ben Shear on behalf of the MUB said, "How are you doing this without reflection?" Because under our charter, it says that no franchise will be granted without a vote of the people, right? So, again, that is one of those old provisions, that, that's not legal anymore. The, the case on it, there's been a lot of litigation on that for years, not anything recent, because it's all been decided. The, the most recent case I could find in our jurisdiction is a federal case where these occur in federal court, because we're talking about the Cable Act, Federal Act, and it says, pursuant to the supremacy clause of the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, the United States Congress has the power to preempt state and local law. Indicates that the, through the Cable Television Consumer Protection Act and the Telecommunications Act, Congress subjected the cable industry to rate regulation, prohibited municipalities from awarding excessive franchises, or excuse, exclusive franchises to cable operators, and sought to encourage competition among cable providers. The federal acts specifically preempt any inconsistent provision of state law, including substantive and procedural provisions for the grant, denial, and renewal of cable franchises to the cable operator. The conflict between federal acts and Oklahoma election, the election provision is what they were addressing. The conflict between the federal acts and Oklahoma election approval provision is patent. Voters are not a franchising authority contemplated by the federal acts as empowered to grant or deny a cable franchise. The Oklahoma election approval provision irreconcilably conflicts with virtually every provision of the federal act. Congress's preemption of the field of cable regulation is clear, and the federal acts prescribe submission of the proponents' initiative to the voters. The reasoning behind that is that under the act, there are very, very limited reasons that a franchise can be denied, and voters can deny just by voting no, they don't have to have a reason. And so, they've indicated that that, that's just not legal anymore, so that's where we're at on that.
I think, and that's one of the things here, is that, when I put that in there, is that I think we need to review section seventy-eight and section eighty-two, and possibly get it back on the ordinance commission, committee and call for the vote to rescind or recall those two provisions in the charter, and call for an election sometime to do that, not a special election, but to do away with those two provisions, because as he's, as Mr. Ritchie just said, the, it's illegal now, and so nineteen fifty-five, it might've been legal back then, but we need to look at doing that, and I would encourage us to do that.
We've got a few things.
Yeah, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to give Ms. Squires an opportunity to speak, if you'd like to, you've driven all this way, and you're welcome to come to City Council Meeting in Pryor.
Thank you very much for having me, and I apologize for not being at the previous city council meeting. I did have the opportunity to talk to several of you on the phone, or leave you a message if I didn't get to talk with you, so I appreciate that opportunity. Obviously, Cox Communications has been a longstanding company in the state of Oklahoma. We are somewhat relatively new to Pryor, but we look forward to the same kind of partnership and commitment to your communities that we have had with communities across the state for several decades. Obviously, we've talked, our, our, our main office is in Tulsa, so nearby, but not specifically here in Pryor, but you do have Rob Collins, and he's like his own brick and mortar facility here, and again, this is something that's very, he's very passionate, it's very personal to him, and so I assure you, of all the communities, I have every faith that Rob will ensure everything is done, every I is dotted and T is crossed, and we certainly want to be responsive to any questions or concerns you have, so please know you can always contact me directly, you can contact Rob, you can go knock on his door, as a matter of fact, I'm sorry, I just gave him that. But we, we look forward to the partnership here, we look, we appreciate the four years that we've already been here, and we look forward to an ongoing relationship with the city, so thank you very, very much.
Did you resolve that issue out, by the one property owner that I called?
Hey, within minutes, Rob was out there.
Yeah, I talked to Coach Arnold.
Okay, I just wanted, I called, there was an issue about, one property owner had an issue, and when Ms. Squires called me, I brought it to her attention, and I heard it, I didn't hear anything about it, so I just wanna make sure it got resolved, and thank you very much.
That's, that's one of those, anytime you add something to a pole, right, and the pole runs in somebody's front yard, it, it changes the outlook from their front door, and we know that, we understand that, we hate it, it's just, it's part of infrastructure, so, but we certainly would wanna address those anytime we can. And I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has it.
Thank you.
Ms. Squires, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much, appreciate your help.
So, the reason why this is on the agenda is because it was requested, requested by Mid-America Industrial Park with the district in the area, out in the district. Obviously, Mid-America Industrial Park has had Cox servicing the park out there. Mr. Shaw Fitzel, would you like to speak to the service that Cox has provided the park?
Hello, thank you for having me here. I'm here really just to listen and learn tonight about the issues that are going on within the city limits. You know, we've been partnering with the city for the development of the district and have brought that, that project into the city limits, so it's a great partnership that we have. So, tonight, I'm really just listening to hear what's going on with the video side of things. The partnership that Rob's talked about for the last four years, they've been bringing infrastructure into the park. There's multiple providers of fiber service in the park, so you guys are probably aware of that, that there's several that come into that area, so Cox just being one of them. They have been very aggressive in the project and working with our team out there with the district and, and trying to get their infrastructure in place and be ready to go, but we look forward to, you know, opening up bids for service to the district and to the apartments and the future residential. It's gonna be exciting to see that there's more opportunity and services to be provided for these folks as we continue to grow that area, so, do you guys have any questions for me?
John, thank you.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, one of the things that I think VIVE made the statement the last time was that they did not have the opportunity to bid, so, at the last meeting, and so they was not given the opportunity, just make sure that VIVE does, or anybody else has the opportunity, same opportunities to bid on competitive marketing, competitive bidding, stuff like that, just goes forward.
So, for our, our space at the district, we have one service coming in there, and VIVE is providing a price for us for that service. Cox has already provided a price to us, so they are competing for that fiber service. We haven't contemplated what we want for video service yet. The bunker itself, that's our community room, that's the only area that will have service, but the rest of the service for the retail space, it's gonna be up to each individual customer in there, so it's, it's nice to see that they're gonna have options for their space to, to get competitive bids.
So, when you start building houses out there, so that people want VIVE, or if they want, somebody else comes in, they'll have that opportunity?
So, yeah, whenever the developer comes in and starts, it won't be Mid-America actually developing the single family, but when that developer comes in, they'll have to work with those developers to establish services.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. We've had a lot of discussion, and we've had questions answered. There is a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Call for vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Vance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes, and again, I wanna say thanks to Mr. Ritchie and everybody for getting this thing, making this so thorough, so everybody understands what's going on.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, we'll move to item five, City Attorney's Report, item A.
Item A, five A, is Amendment of December fifteen, twenty twenty minutes to document Scrivener's error on the Ragsdale plat. Everyone had this little two-page memo in their packet, I believe, from Cheryl.
Yes, I do.
Can we get a motion and a...
Make a motion, second.
There's a motion, Trammell's second, who seconded?
Shropshire. Okay, let me give you a really quick explanation. Under our former ordinances, before we adopted the UDO, the plats were approved by the city council. Under the UDO, the final approval of plats occurs by the P and Z, and so it's a streamlined procedure, they're the appropriate ones to be doing it anyway. And so, the old seal that our engineer in the city has previously used, because we have to seal those plats to show that they've been properly approved before they get reported on the land records, the old seal had never been changed, the old statement had never been changed, and it said, "approved by the city council." It was actually approved by the P and Z. Now, approval by the P and Z also appears on the plat. Now, approval by the P and Z also appears on the plat, so it shows that it's been approved by P and Z, and then it also shows it's been approved by the council. That's wrong, it hadn't been approved by the council, because it's not approved by the council. So, rather than redo a plat circulated for a dozen different signatures with all different people, they asked me what to do, and I said, "Let's take it in front of the city council, correct it by documenting the minutes from December the fifteenth of twenty twenty explaining what occurred, and it'll also appear in the minutes from this meeting, and if anybody ever questions it, they'll be able to figure out, okay, that was a Scrivener's error, and the city code didn't even require that anywhere." So, if you will approve this motion, the motion would be to supplement the twelve, fifteen, twenty meeting minutes with this actual two-page little explanation that Cheryl typed up, and that those also become, it also become part of the minutes for tonight.
Do we have a new seal?
I believe we do.
All right.
Other discussion? Hearing none, call for vote.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Did she say?
She said yes.
Okay. Thompson?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five B is second, final reading, discussion, possible action regarding ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter Five, Section One and Two regarding adoption of the two thousand and fifteen International Residential Code.
Is there a motion to weigh the second reading?
Make a motion.
Motion, Chipwood, second. Shropshire, discussion, call for vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell? Thompson?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Motion carries, item C.
Item five C, second and final reading, discussion, possible action regarding an ordinance regarding zoning change from RS, residential single, to RD, residential duplex, for the property in the city of Pryor to wit two-acre tracts of land situated in Lot Twenty, Block Three, Pierre Chateau Edition, to the city of Pryor Creek, Mays County, State of Oklahoma, according to the legal description as appearing in the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Thompson, second by Breakfield, discussion, call for vote.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell? Thompson?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item D.
Item five D, second and final reading, discussion, possible action regarding an ordinance regarding zoning change from RD, residential duplex, to CAR, commercial automotive recreation zoning applicant, Justin James with James Properties, requesting a zoning change for the property in the city of Pryor to wit legal description as appearing in the agenda.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Chipwood?
Second.
Smith, discussion, call for vote.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Could I call on, uh, Mr., Mr. Willier, could you check on Mr. Trammell, please?
He's, uh, he's on call, we're gonna have to talk to my guys, he'll be right back up.
Very good, thank you. All right, item six, discussion, possible action on consent agenda. Item A, approval minutes of December fifteen, two thousand and twenty council meeting with amendment to state Scrivener error on the Ragsdale plat. Item B, approved payroll purchase orders through January eight, two thousand and twenty-one. Item C, approved claims for purchase orders through January five, two thousand and twenty-one. Item D, acknowledge receipt of deficient purchase orders. Item E, discussion, possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars to Cowboy Riggs for a ninety-six by twenty goose neck tandem dual dump trailer for the Pryor Creek Street Department from street capital outlay account one four, one four five by four one one as approved in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year budget. This was the only bid received, and it is the same bid price. Excuse me. Item F, discussion, possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars to EcoLox Tech for the purchase of an EcoLox Tech two forty electrolyzed water system to generate hypochlorous acid from COVID reimbursement account O two, two zero one, five four zero one. Other quotes received, Service Wing Organic Solutions for a Service Wing Analyte Generator in the, in the base amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and Better Way Distributing for a DES sixteen thousand in the amount of thirteen thousand, or a DES four thousand in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Item G, discussion, possible action regarding reappointment of Larry Williams to seat number seven of the Economic Development Trust Authority term ending January thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two. Item H, discussion, possible action regarding appointing mayor as representative to the Grand Gateway Board of Directors for two thousand and twenty-one, or accepting nominations from the council. Item I, discussion, possible action to approve the Pryor Creek Police Department to move forward with the purchase of Motorola Spillman Flex Records Management System at a cost of, and there is a mistake there, and we would want to correct that mistake to read two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. Two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. And with recommended funding via a lease purchase agreement with Bank of Commerce at the interest rate of one point nine nine percent for a term of ten years, the amount expense, the annual expense of twenty-four thousand, twelve dollars is to be funded by Police Equipment Capital Outlay Account four four, four four five, five four, two four. Other bids received, RCB Bank at two point six seven percent, First Priority Bank, three point one seven percent. Item J, discussion, possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to Vigilant Solutions LLC for the purchase of license plate recognition software that consists of twelve mobile companion user license, one investigative data platform, twenty WatchGuard car detector mobile software license and support, and twenty twenty-five foot ethernet cables. Vigilant, Vigilant is the sole source provider of the WatchGuard car detector mobile software, and is the only provider that has the ability to integrate with WatchGuard in car video system with, uh, for license plate recognition. This is paid for by the Attorney General's Safe Oklahoma Grant from donation police attorney general account, uh, grant account number nine six, nine six five, five five zero three. Item K, discussion, possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to WatchGuard for the purpose of two WatchGuard four RE in-car cameras and vista body camera packages which include warranties, license, network opinion, uh, option, and technical services. WatchGuard is the only, is the current in-car and body camera system used by the Pryor Creek Police Department. This is paid for by Attorney General's Safe Oklahoma Grant from account nine six, nine six five, five five zero three. This is the consent agenda. Which of the items would council like to remove?
A.
Item A.
Need to take off I.
Item I. Council would like to remove item A and item I, and I would entertain a motion to approve all of the other items on.
Mr. Mayor, you need to remove H because of the way it's worded.
Uh, thank you, removing item H. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. I would entertain a motion then to approve all the items that not have been, have not been removed. Smith?
I'll second.
And second, Chipwood. Discussion, call for vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Motion carries, item A, approved minutes of December fifteen, two thousand and twenty council meeting with amendment to state Scrivener's error on the Ragsdale plat. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, Catcher, second. Smith, call for vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Staying.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Motion carries, item H, discussion, possible action regarding reappointing mayor as representative to the Grand Gateway Board of Directors for two thousand and twenty-one, or accepting nominations from council.
I make a motion, we reappoint, they'll appoint the mayor as representative of the Grand Gateway Board of Directors for twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Trammell, second by Chipwood, discussion. Hearing none, call for vote.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item I, discussion, possible action to remove, uh, to approve the Pryor Creek Police Department.
Remove James Blower.
Been a long day.
Willier, not James Blower.
May I start again reading that? Item I, discussion, possible action to approve the Pryor Creek Police Department to move forward with purchase of Motorola Spillman Flex Records Management System at a cost of two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars, and with the recommended funding via a lease purchase agreement with the Bank of Commerce and interest rate of one point nine nine percent for a term of ten years, an annual expense of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, uh, twelve dollars is to be funded by, funded from the Pryor Equipment Capital Outlay Account four four, four four five, five four, two four. Other bids received, RCB Bank at two point six seven percent, and First Priority Bank at three point one seven percent. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
Motion, uh, Shropshire, second. Catcher, um, Mr. Ritchie, you have some comment about this motion?
Two comments, uh, council needs to be aware of. Number one, the agreement that's in your packet, I think it's in your packet, on the purchase of that, there would need to be a modification to that agreement, because the way it's drafted, as presented to you, shows the city of Pryor as the purchaser. The purchaser would actually be the bank. So, the way we typically show that is that we'll show the bank as being the purchaser, and us as being the less, uh, so we'll make that, it's not a substantive change, we'll just make sure the packet will track for lease purchase. The second thing I want to mention on that is that the, we're doing this financing because, you know, we can't go borrowing money, we can't obligate funds past the current fiscal year, it's two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, so in the way it's feasible is to do something like this. So, when you structure these lease purchase agreements, they can be non-taxable or taxable. Now, anything that the city does is non-taxable, right? But the bank that's loaning us the money, in essence, under the lease purchase, the, the interest that we pay them has to be determined to either taxable or not taxable to them. It's drafted so that it's not taxable. The impact that that has is that in any fiscal, not fiscal year, in a calendar year, the maximum that you can, that a municipality can, can borrow money and have it bank rated in non-tax is ten million dollars. So, if we borrow, in essence, borrow during this lease purchase, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, then that reduces that ability to borrow up to ten million by that amount, so nine point eight million is the amount that our capacity to, to do this bank rated financing in a calendar year. I want you to understand that, and see where we could borrow ten million dollars, but it is an important consideration.
Don't we, aren't we borrowing ten million now?
It's in a calendar year.
Okay, okay.
So, we've already done that in the calendar year.
Okay.
Two years. That was nineteen, right?
Yeah.
I believe we got it all closed in nineteen, right?
That was in two thousand and nineteen, two years.
I have a question, is the twenty, is the twenty-four thousand correct? Is that number correct? I thought it was greater than that.
It's two, the, the, the approximate is two thousand one a month, the payment revealing is, it'll be about twenty-four thousand a year.
And that includes all the, all those software packages and all that, you know, I just want to make sure, okay?
And all the maintenance and all that?
Yeah, yeah. I, I want to say one, I want to say one thing that I do appreciate again, uh, James met with me, and met with some other council members, stuff like that, we met, and Motorola sat down and listened to me ramble for about three hours, questions and stuff, and I appreciate that, and solved a lot of issues and concerns that we can go forward with this thing, and so I'm ready to, I'm ready to go forward, and I appreciate the hard work that James did and Motorola did.
I'd like to follow up with that. This has been a big project that's been worked on for a long time, a lot of effort, and time, and energy have been put into this from the start, and, I, I mean, you started presenting this information, um, with presenters and everything, even at the Budget Committee meeting that we discussed this at, so I appreciate all of that.
And I want to make sure everybody understands too, this is not the last that you'll hear about this, because there's other items out there that I think we need to do when we go into a new building, the joint thing, the e-tickets and stuff like that, we need to look at doing some of the other things, because we're going to have first-class facility, we need to have first-class facility.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the discussion. Any other discussion? Call for vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Trammell?
Sherri Limeade. Yes. He promised me Sherri Limeade yesterday, he didn't deliver.
She ran her car.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Item seven, committee reports, budget personnel, Breakfield.
Uh, there's nothing to report, we just have our next budget committee meeting on January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, five thirty.
Y'all come. Item B, ordinance insurance, Shropshire.
Right, one on the eleventh.
Meeting on the eleventh, that is a special call meeting, and that, uh...
Have three ordinance to work on.
That, that agenda will be posted on Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, street committee, Smith.
Uh, nothing at this time, but Buddy would like to thank you for your new equipment.
It's well deserved. Very good. Item eight, unforeseeable business.
I have, I have two things right here, if you just allow me to read these, I got a...
Ms. Thompson, do you have your stick?
I got a text message, I got a text message from somebody, and it said, "The staff at the health center is overwhelmed, we're doing all we can, probably the governor needs to know that health centers need help in staffing, also need trying to set up communication in addition to testing fixings. Please, if you can, we do need help, we need more staffing, so anything you can do to contact your local, your governor, we could use some more help." And I want, I was, I got that from one lady, and so, I appreciate that. The other thing I want to tell you is that Devonte Smith, Alabama, won the Heisman. Not an OU player.
I can tell you, Jimmy, the Oklahoma MRC, the Medical Reserve Corps, has been activated if we're able to participate in areas to help.
Yep, thank you.
It's good to know, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Uh, item nine, oh.
Second.
Call for vote.
Nance?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.